Height for replacing water lines or just buying those clamps to clamp and bandage it?
No, we we thought I can replace when we can.
Okay, so my question is that leak we had the other day fifty thousand gallons per hour? That's a lot of gas, that's that's a lot of water.
I agree.
It I it's ridiculous. They put two clamps on that fifteen inch splitter. Water's already off. Cut that section out, put a new pipe in. It's gonna last us longer than those two clamps. Why are we not doing that?
That would be a wrong question. But another reason I know of is that they want to get the water back on.
And I understand that. We want our water back on, but we want our water on and for it to stay on. Where those two clamps, there's gonna be an infrastructure though you're five foot from those two clamps.
I agree.
Can you cut it off again?
And then it's gonna be cut off again, whereas if they replace that one block of pipe, we don't have that problem. And I know that we don't have the money to just go replace everything. But if we just replace the sections that we can as we can do it, we build our infrastructure back up and we don't have these problems. So why are we not working on that instead of just bandaging everything?
It's a money issue, but...
But if you have the pipe, why are we not, I I understand we were out of water, I think my water was off maybe two hours. I would gladly have my water off for five to have that pipe replaced so that...
They could've done five.
They could, yeah. And I understand, and that's my brother did tell me that it would be a day or so. And I get it, I do. But if we don't start replacing pipe instead of just putting those bandage clamps on, we're not gonna get anywhere. We're gonna keep having this problem. And we're at stage four water loss right now, restrictions and whatnot. But these leaks aren't helping that with us. So, I mean, we've really gotta start working on, if we've got the pipe, we need to try to replace what we can instead of just putting a bandage on it.
We don't just have the pipe stacked up around here.
And I understand, she does say we have replacement pipe. So if we have a pipe that we can do it, why are we not at least trying?
We didn't have that size of pipe.
And and I know that was a bigger pipe. I get it because I work for the gas company, we don't always have a sixteen inch pipe. I get it. But we can order, and I know it is a money issue, but you can order pipe. So I I'm just not understanding why we're not replacing what we can.
Well, you have to fix the water while the pipe's coming. I mean, I can't just... And that that's that's what they decided on.
That did happen one other time, and it's not like we never go back and replace pipe because we had another large leak like that and they first just clamped it and fixed it. But when they can get back to it, they left it open and went back and replaced the whole thing because it was a situation just like that.
Greenbill did the same thing on our outage, they put us out for a week, they put a temporary patch on it.
It is our goal.
And I I get that because we do it...
On a nice day, they came back and did it.
You're four minutes.
Your four minutes is uh is is gone now at this point, so Lisa, okay, thank you. But you're right about that, it it is an issue.
Also water issue. What? I've heard over and over that there are wells. And I don't know, Chillicothe mixes theirs and I'm new to all this situation, but what is the situation for the wells for our city? Could we do that and is that something that's feasible for us? And speaking of clamps, I will take you and deal with the shovel if I have to a joint of pipe across my alley that has eighteen clamps in ten foot. Now, somewhere in here, they're gonna run out of room with the pipes. I mean, they're just gonna. And so, while you got it dug up, let's just fix it. I mean, and yes, it'll be dug up waiting on pipe, but why don't we have a couple of joints of pipe here ready to go because we know we have an issue. We know this. Cindy O'Neil has a pizza pipe from from the alley over here, direction of which way I am, that's so corroded and so awful and we all know the pipes look like that. So, let's just get in a direction, we know we're not gonna change this overnight, but let's get in a direction. Back to the wells. Where, what what is the situation with the wells? Do we have wells for quality?
We don't have wells anymore.
But how do you look?
The land that was called the Water Farm was, I think, in Kingstown, where we're in Chillicothe. And that was sold by several, several, several different councils ago. Was uh sold, the land was sold. I think we still have part of the water rods, but we don't have that land anymore. If we dug wells at this point, we're gonna have to build a treatment facility to treat the water before it can go into the circulation system. So that would be another... That would be another thing.
Okay. What governing board of water looks over this mess that we have? That are that we're working with, or how does that go?
Um, we've got an application with the Texas Water Development Board. Um, E C A looks at it, T C G looks at it. There's a drinking water fund with the Texas Water Development Board. There's several out there that are sources of funding.
Okay. And we are...
And not...
And we're begging, are we not?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you, because we need to. Swimming pool, city swimming pool. Will it be filled this year?
No.
I heard that it was going to be filled with the well.
We, the very first year we had the well, it was sufficient to fill the pool and we used strictly that well. Now we've been blending it with city water, but we have closed it before when we've been in this situation, so...
I'm just ask a question right quick. The wells, like she's talking, can we work with Carrie Dotson? Because I know there's some out north that used to run the G P. And I took the papers and stuff and showed the maps to Ronnie in Romanium. And is there any way we can work with Carrie, uh, y'all work with Carrie? And see, hey, is there a couple of wells or something out there that we could use maybe to pop in? Just so that if we run out of water, I mean...
Well, Carrie's been here and, I mean, we've had discussions about her and her board looking for water sources in the county.
Okay, I was just...
I'm gonna suggest that, you talked about a roundtable. I'm gonna suggest that needs to be the number one item that needs to be taken care of directly with with a little bit of people from all walks of life and professional different duties and things that that maybe we can get some some help with.
I could say in two thousand and six, an individual from Dallas bought land out of Kingstown to put a hunting shed on it, because I had to spread it in there. But he bought it with the uh knowing that there was gonna be a water problem in the future. And he could sell it for top dollar. That was coming from him. So, just using that one example, it could be other properties that have been bought for the same reason.
Yes, we get our shit up, thank you.
Hey, uh, is that all? Cindy, was that your...
Well, the infrastructure, where are we at on the...
The application's in, they said it takes four to six months for them to make a decision.
And while we're waiting on four to six months, are there other things that we can be begging for? And I'm not using the term loosely either, I know we need it.
They are, they are.
Because I mean...
Which grant is that?
The Texas Water Development Board.
When was that due?
That was March the sixth. March the sixth or seventh.
Is that the one that we had someone else reach out that was offering from Abilene?
Right.
The same grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
But can we get other grants other than that one? Like your U S D A grants and stuff?
The lady at Water Finance Exchange is diligently searching for funding. She has, she knows all the avenues to search through.
There's a new list comes out every month.
Okay. Is that all Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Michael Helmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Next.
Long time listener, first time caller. Just a couple of quick things that I didn't get a chance to sign up at our last meeting, so I just wanted to touch base and just voice an opinion. On two subjects, one being the grant for sidewalks downtown. I feel like if we're gonna be matching a grant, especially a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, I don't know, is it five, ten percent, whatever we gotta match, I feel like those funds would go into much more constructive grants, uh, like our infrastructure, like a lot of other things. Because my opinion, those sidewalks downtown, one, I think they're fine, I understand they're a little high, but there are low spots in approaches on both ends of those blocks. In the meantime, they're not cracked, they're not falling apart. I feel like a hundred fifty thousand dollars that we gotta match, a little bit wasted money at this moment in time. Uh, also, state of Texas, uh, you need to replace or repair a sidewalk. You can actually do that work, uh, if you approach the business owner, property owner, excuse me, and you can charge them. And it's up to that property owner to take care of those sidewalks. So you guys could replace the sidewalks and have it billed to the property owners. I can tell you who owns half of downtown, especially where my building is. Have we ever exercised that rather than matching a grant?
Well, I told you all when I talked to you about going after this grant, that it would be one of those we could pull out of...
Right, right.
You know, if, because I don't wanna go into loans over sidewalks when we got these other issues going to. So we're just kind of walking along, she has contacted me, um, and they want to work with us and perhaps there are ways that we work out where we're not out actually money over the deal. But it's, like I said, I told her clearly that we were not into making loans when we're in the middle of trying to get a grant for water infrastructure, so that they're working with me on that. If it works out, it does, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Understood, understood. The only other thing I I was saying, uh, there are four minutes here, is it looks like approved for a five hundred dollar a month pay increase for a member of the E D C. And I know it's gonna be touchy, but I'm just gonna speak from my personal experience as a business owner. It took six months and us to contact the E D C, to have someone even say hi to us. So, when that happened, a person approached us and we were asking questions and everything and that member basically said, I don't know what my job is. Now that was six months after, see, we opened in September, so maybe December, January, we were approached, right? And at that time, so you're telling me in four months that that person has gone above and beyond, exceeded expectations to the point of giving a five hundred dollar a month raise? I don't know about y'all, I work for a very large corporation and I've had exceeding expectation reviews. I didn't get no five hundred dollar a month raise, tell you that, that's a billion dollar corporation. So I I feel like that is unwarranted. Not only that, is this review or was a review performed and is that something that's gonna be released?
Ma'am, I wanna ask a question. Should that be brought up in front of all of us or should that just be behind closed doors with y'all?
It was brought up last meeting.
I know it was and we, that's why I'm asking now. Because it shouldn't, because we should not have brought it up the last meeting.
We're not gonna get into a back and forth over this. We'll bring this, we'll bring your concern to the E D C, okay? All right. Now, um, Jeff?
I'm gonna say it.
Okay.
You're down half, hey.
Jeff's still working on the streets, I think it's all gonna work out, so...
I just got a question about that grant. It, was that to widen the road?
It's it's going to make it where the road is a little wider because, you know, with all the big vehicles, it's gotten very difficult and it lowers the sidewalk. I don't know, that, the engineers, we haven't gotten that far in the deal, but it is to the place and make the sidewalks not so tall and a little wider and change the angle of the parking and new ladder downtown.
It's worth your clothes to bring that deal, but...
But, like I said, that's kind of, still very much on the, you know, side. Okay, Dan.
Man, all I want to talk about is our problems with with gas and talk at airport, I've talked to Paula about it, you were right. We've had problems on and off since that, or that old building down south of the administration building. But we've been very, like, we've got eighteen airplanes, one helicopter in Quanah that would like to have cash. And I know Paula's working on it. So, the main thing with, I'm very lucky, we've only had two airplanes land that we had to go to burning and buy gas so they could leak at the class. So we've been very, very fortunate that nothing, more has happened, but, you know, it's coming up flying season. I wanna go flying and I don't have gas. But I know Paula's working on that and we just pray that the things that she needs to correct all of that will come soon.
Angie.
I'm out here about the water, so I'm sorry that y'all work for them too. Long time resident here, I live in Burness, I'm sure I'll face the same problems. As y'all know, I'm Angie, was Gonzales, so I was born and raised here in Quanah. Uh, my nephew, Redland or Paula, I talked to her about it and I appreciate the time she gave me. Like I said, I'm here because I would like to, my nephew died February ninth on the intersection of King and, in tragic passing. I'm pretty sure all know his name is Adrian Silas. He was well loved, raised here in town, graduated from the school. I know the street, King Street's been King Street forever, my entire life. I would really like to ask the city of Quanah if they could rename it after my nephew. If I need to give a petition and have written it, sign it, I would love to do that. I would just like something to be here with him. And that's why I'm asking, I mean, I don't know what the extent, what the troubles would be, but I want to do anything to help. If it's the cost of money to pay for a sign, cost of money to do whatever, I'll do it. I just want something for my nephew in this city. And so, that's all I want, you know. I don't know what I need to do, which way I need to go, but if y'all can tell me, I'm gonna do it.
Well, there's no action we can take on it to not...
No, I mean, absolutely, I understand, yeah.
That's not on our agenda.
Right, absolutely.
Back with Paula and she'll instruct you further what these, the next steps need to be.
Okay, awesome, I can do that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the papers I had. Anybody else have one I didn't see? Okay, then let's move on and with action, with item number two, considering approved the minutes of the regular meeting on March the eighteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Second motion, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
My second, it's been moved by Shane Lance and seconded by Becky Parker to approve the minutes for the regular reading on March the eighteenth, two thousand twenty five, both in favor? Both opposed. Minutes are approved. Number three, consider approved the payment of bills received from March seventeenth to April the fourth.
I make the motion to approve the payment of bills received March seventeenth, twenty twenty five through April fourth, twenty twenty five.
So...
Been moved by Ashley O'Neil and seconded by Shane Lance to approve the payment of bills from March seventeenth to April the fourth, twenty twenty five, both in favor? Both opposed. At this time, I will now open the public hearing regarding the zoning change at seven ten Star Street from R one to R three for the purpose of an R V park. And before we go forward, the zoning committee met, zoning board met, and they made the recommendation to deny this application of change. Uh, mainly citing concern about what's being within the school area and the neighborhood traffic. Do I have any comments from public hearing?
You could talk about the new R V park, everything to say.
Anybody need an explanation, close to y'all in the area over here?
The council will take a vote on it, but that has been the recommendation from the zoning board to...
What was the recommendation?
To deny the application.
Well, I support the denying of it.
Yep. Yep.
I I just have a question. Uh, what, how many, three slots are we talking here?
Last floor.
Because, I mean, if we're already in this water, it's not a good, it's not a good time to start extra things that we, that we can't sustain.
And the roads.
I didn't know how many slots were talking.
Are there any further public comments? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Well, so we're, as a school, we're concerned about the potential of people in there that aren't supposed to be in a close proximity to the school.
Can I throw out, this is labeled as an R V park. If if they were to put a mole on there, a house, there's probably about three or four lots there. Would that be a problem?
It has to be resumed for it.
For just, for just a house?
For a trailer.
For a house.
Okay, no.
Just a trailer, who got it? Does it have to be resummed?
No.
What about the next business?
If they put more than one house on that, Richard.
The next time when they want to put a truck stop there across the street, it was...
It would be all right, Joe, but we're not trying to say that. We're trying to say it's where the, where it is at. It's not even a block from your school.
You just made it, I have a child in that school.
I know it, that's why we're saying, that's the only thing, we're not trying to...
It's water, that's why it goes that.
That's, that's just...
Well, your water, that alley, that pipe I have has come from the alley that wants to do it, so...
It's all over town, that's what the pipes look like in my alley.
But but what I'm saying is, it's not, that we're, we're saying it's close to your school, you have no room in that area. There's not no room at all. Eighth Street is the street that's traveled more for your kids going to football, going to baseball, going to track, everything like that. It's not just your water, it's right there in your house and it brings all the property down, property down too, all the houses that are around it.
I think it was about a couple of years ago when, uh, who's the, oh my gosh, the guy that does the water and all that stuff, the roads? Coley. When Coley replaced it and tried to fix that road going down to the football field and it is already torn back up, you're just gonna add more traffic, more holes, more problems. I mean, my, my opinion.
Are there any other comments on the, um... Harvey, more. If not, then I'm gonna close this public hearing and open our general meeting and go on to number five, considering three recommendations of the, of the planning and zoning board. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we reject the application for the R V park.
My second.
Been moved by Becky Parker and seconded by Richard Hope to deny the application for the re-zoning of the R one to R three. R V park, both in favor? Both opposed. The applications have been denied. Now, number five, uh, number six, let's discuss, we have, tell us what's going on with the airport.
Okay, so, um, the soft, we got this system in two thousand fifteen. The tanks are good, the dispensers good, but there's an ongoing problem with the software. It's, I mean, I think it's older than two thousand fifteen because you have to open a DOS Windows to program that the fuel process and all that stuff, so... Um, it'll, it works until it doesn't and we're thinking it might have been that wind event that caused something to glitch. But there's a, there's the credit card reader and then it goes to a security box and then it goes to the credit card processor and all three of those people blame each other on it. And so I had them all on the phone all at one time and we agreed, I mean, you know, they went through their troubleshooting things and anyway, they finally told me that I needed a tech to come out. Well, they come out of Clinton, Oklahoma, and the day I found that out, I called and, um, he said that he would get his tech to call and schedule with me. And then a day later, I called and I said, I was looking for the status of the tech calling issue. Oh, I'm so glad you called me back, he says, I guess I wrote your number down. So... Um, anyway, he took my number down. I emailed him my information. He sent me a credit app because they didn't have this in their system anymore. I filled that out and I'm still waiting for the check.
How many days is this been?
A long time since February.
How long has the gas pump been out at the airport?
It's been on, it's on, they tore the building down.
Yeah, but yes, nine days, longer?
Not nine, it's since the bill of February. I, well, I had a transaction in February is is what's confusing to me because I went out with Preston Simmons when I first got out of that, because nobody calls me, nobody calls.
I know.
So I went out with Preston because he didn't call me. I saw the air code, I had that before, I called immediately, did, and that's when I started on it. On February nineteenth or something like that, I got a call from my college that his card had been processed twice and I thought, oh, good, it's working again. Never heard another word about it, had this trouble fixed and then two weeks later, I hear it again. I'm not at the airport, so if there's a problem with the fuel system, I need to be aware of it. And now that's where we are, so what, I'm gonna ask for the, the software to be changed and the last software that was in there cost eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Not gonna ask for it to be changed unless it can be covered by ramp and that is a ninety ten grant, but that's where I am.
Um, did you talk to Jason Poole?
All the time.
And he talked to you about this issue?
Yes.
Specifically, because he mentioned to me that if it's an issue of matching funds, there may be something that he would have a little bit to work on. And then the other thing is there's two apps that Paula's used that have whether or not there's fuel available at airports and how much fuel is. And he mentioned that he would only like for those to be kept up to the two numbers, what air now?
And the other one is four flight? I do air now, but I can't do four flight. It's a Mac-based, uh, app, but I did the biggest thing and I called, uh, for a notice to Airman, which is a nationwide alert system to tell them that our fuel isn't available and that can be set for two weeks and if it's not resolved by the end of the two weeks, gonna call back and redo it.
Subject area, answer the question. Okay, I guess we found out on number seven, considering approved the E D C updates and expenditures.
Hi, good evening. Um, so we had our meeting last month, or not last month, last week. Uh, we were approached by Boys and Girls Club, we donated to them two years ago, ten thousand dollars. Um, they told us how much they appreciated that, how long the hell that has gone from when they opened two years ago till now. And they're now cert, researching, researching for more money for the Quanah site. So, we would like to match that as well and do another ten thousand dollars to help cover the cost for our Quanah kids. Also, we've had two dedicated for member favorites party administrator who have reached into their terms and expressed their attempt to sit down. Uh, we're very thankful for their time and commitment contributions to our board. Um, in light of their departure, we would respectfully like to recommend the appointment of Sarah Hernandez and Zane Henderson to fill those upcoming spots if that is something y'all will go for. So, is there a Hernandez? Yes.
Do I have anybody that wants to make any kind of a motion on her, um, updates and expenditures?
I'll make a motion that we approve Sarah Hernandez, Zane Henderson and the ten thousand dollars to the Quanah Boys and Girls Club.
Been moved by Shane Lance and seconded by Ashley O'Neil to approve Sarah Hernandez and Zane Henderson for the board and the expenditure of ten thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Club. Both in favor? Both opposed? Do we have anything else you want, any administrators reported in favor?
No, I'm just talking about the swimming pool and I made a decision not to open that janitor's door. And she asked if we could put something in paper, Shane, to...
And she asked if we could do something in paper, Shane, to...
It'll be next one.
Okay, and, uh, and, um, just tell everybody, there will be a new council. I was supposed to remind everyone, there's a meet of candidates Monday night at six thirty at the foyer. All of you that are running, um...
That's the fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
Our flowers just doesn't...
Next Monday night at the foyer at six thirty if you wanna meet the candidates that are running for council. And, um, I believe this council will have to be involved and everybody start really paying attention to our water situation. I feel like they, this will be an ongoing thing, you know, starting to try to figure out. But we're all just as concerned. We live here too. We're all just as concerned as y'all are about what, what to do. It is a bigger, it's a very big issue, so... And this meeting is adjourned.